So, welcome all to the March twenty-fifth meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. This meeting is going to be held entirely by Zoom, so I'm going to read the remote participant procedures. This meeting may be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application and create an account. While conducting Zoom meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. But the use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. Number one, while the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video, public participants invited to speak by the chair will be on video or audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. Number two, all votes will be by roll call. Number three, for public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function bound under participants from Zoom, or make a request with the Q and A function. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. The chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which testimony may be offered, the duration of the comment period afforded to each individual and or entity, and the number of individuals and entities permitted to speak. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held. An off-topic commentary or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. The chair reserves the right to end the testimony of anyone who abuses use of the meeting platform and to remove them from the hearing. And number five, when all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting signaling the end of the meeting and the termination of the ECAT recordings. All participants will be disconnected from the meeting at that time. For purposes of quorum, we will do a roll call to start. Amos Kadham.
Present.
Kathy Kidd.
Present.
And Robert Stetson is present. So, the first matter is actually a... Am I correct that this is a, this is a public hearing, the modification to a definitive subdivision plan at Summer Heights?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, let's, uh, do we have anyone here?
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's okay.
It's been so long since we've done a Zoom meeting. Forgot my role. Okay, so we have David Leonard, and I just promoted him as a panelist. And David, if there's anyone else with you, let me know.
No, there's no one else here with me in person. My sister Donna Barrick may be on as well, as she's on, and you can let her in, Stephanie.
Would you like me to promote her to panelist as well?
Sure.
And while we're waiting for the promotion, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the notice of public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one dash T MGL. The Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on March twenty-fifth at six thirty PM on the application received from David Leonard to request the modification to the approved definitive subdivision plan for Summer Heights located at six Sherwood Drive, Easton, Mass. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom. The virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. A copy of the application and plan may be viewed on the town website. Okay, Mr. Leonard, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, Stephanie, should I put the plan up or just kind of give a one or two minute overview of what we're looking to do first?
Um, that's, I think you can do both at the same time.
Alright, let me, uh, let me put the, I did the share screen here. Let me know if you see it.
Perfect. And before you get started, uh, could you just please state your, your name, uh, and identify your, your address and, and also the other participant?
Sure, did Donna Barrick, was she on, Stephanie?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, okay, um, yeah, so my name's David Leonard, um, and as well with my sister Donna Barrick is on, we are the two trustees of the Leonard Family Revocable Trust who have put forth this application as owners of the, of the, um, said street and the said land that we're looking to finish up the, the work that we need to be done there. And, um, so we, I live in South Boston, uh, Donna lives in Carlisle. Um, and, um, you know, we've, uh, we're very familiar with the property as we inherited the property from, from our parents. My, my father, Robert Leonard and Gene Leonard, Leonard were the original developers forty years ago of this. So, we're looking to pick the ball back up and get Sherwood Drive finished to the town's satisfaction and eventually have it, um, approved at town meeting to be, uh, owned and taken care of by the town. So, I think everyone can see what Sherwood Drive, the plan looks like, um, as, uh, put together by Arthur Borden, um, our civil on this. And I think I read through the, through the summary that was put out, you know, as, I don't know how familiar folks are with this area. This is the last, uh, little bit of roadway left unfinished in the Summer Heights development down in the seventies and eighties. And it's a short little cul-de-sac street, um, with, uh, with a couple houses that have been there for about forty years or so, Mulvey on one side, and uh, it shows Synergy Realty Trust, um, owned by, um, Luke, uh, Gelder, I think his last name is right now. There's two, so there's two existing homes there right here and right here that have been there for forty-plus years. Um, so the, really, the, what's been done so far, my, my, um, mom and dad were able to construct most of the roadway back, um, forty years ago. They, all the infrastructure's been there. Um, we've been working with the town, Stephanie and Greg Swan for the past two years on this. And we had a punch list of things to finish up in order to make the road, uh, meet the town's specifications. And part of this here is, the last, one of the last parts here is, is redoing the sidewalk. There's an existing sidewalk here that runs on the Mulvey side right now. And it terminates right here roughly, and then, uh, we're looking to, there is no sidewalk on the side that was not required at the time, so there, and that's, I think, uh, uh, comparable to what's in the rest of the subdivision already. So, what we're looking to do is just terminate the sidewalk, and we're gonna be redoing the sidewalk, regrading it and repaving it. We're in the process of getting that done along with the roadway. And what we're asking for is a waiver from the town, so we don't have to extend it all the way around the cul-de-sac around here. We're looking for this waiver, so we don't have to complete the exterior sidewalk. Just terminate it where it is currently right now, which is, this is, sidewalk's already in existence, it's a straight run. And the reason for that is, uh, we don't think it's necessary, um. There's only three wooded lots here currently that are owned by myself, my, one of my sisters, Janet Strazinski, and then Donna owns the third lot here. So, it's just the three of us that owns the, that own these lots, um. We all have different plans on, on what, on timing of if and when we develop these, these lots. Um, I'm probably the sooner than the others in terms of timeframe. But primarily, we want to get the road in an acceptable format to be received and accepted by the town. That's our main goal here right now. And we don't think we need the sidewalk because it's just the three of us here and it's unnecessary and it would add extra costs that, quite honestly, you know, as a family doing this here, we're, it's not something we planned to do when our parents did the subdivision forty years ago, so it's money coming out of our pockets, so we're trying to keep costs at a minimum. So, that's the reason.
Okay. Stephanie?
Uh, so, I think that Mr. Leonard has really summarized this well. The, um, he mentioned that on the, the finished part where there is a sidewalk on Sherwood Drive, it's on one side, it does appear that all the rest of the subdivision does have sidewalks, but only on one side of each of the roads. Um, so it would be up to the board to determine whether to grant the waiver as requested. Um, some of the board members, I think Amos and Bob, you were both members of the board when we had a similar request come in from Lullaby Lane when they were looking to finish up that road that was part of the Tanglewood subdivision, similar situation. Um, a much smaller, this is a much larger subdivision. It looks like there are a few hundred houses that comprise the whole area. Um, Tanglewood was a little smaller, but it had sidewalks throughout the main roads in that subdivision and some of the, the side roads. But, um, the residents and the developer agreed that not having sidewalks would be fine, um, with them. And the board did vote to grant that waiver.
Okay.
I just want verification, there is no sidewalks on Brentwood Air Drive, is that correct?
No, there, yeah, there are, I believe it's one side, yes, it's sidewalks throughout the whole of Summer Heights on one side right now.
No, I'm asking Brentwood Drive.
Yes, there's a sidewalk here.
There is a sidewalk on Brentwood, right?
Yeah, this is a continuation right here. This is all sidewalk here, that's a, so this is a continuation, and it currently ends right here with this, where my cursor is, you can see my cursor, that's where the sidewalk ends, so it's, there's no sidewalk on this side of Sherwood, but there is sidewalk on this side of Sher, of Brentwood.
I, I, it seems that it's very common not to extend sidewalks to cul-de-sacs, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a common request. And this is a small subdivision, so I personally don't see why we, uh, will not grant the exception.
Kathy, any, any thoughts?
Uh, which way did we lean on that, the, the last one that you mentioned, Stephanie, that had, uh?
The board voted to waive the requirement for the sidewalk.
Okay, I think we could follow precedent.
And to agree with that sentiment as well. Why don't, unless, did I interrupt you, Amos?
No, it's, it's very similar to, because they also did a big, uh, island inside the cul-de-sac like this one.
Right.
What made the cul-de-sac big, so the people there are walking around, it's, it's okay. Especially three properties only, really.
Yeah, there's not a lot of, there's not gonna be a lot of traffic down there. I, I tend to agree with you. Um, this is a public hearing, uh, why don't we open it up to the public at this point?
So, uh, we have one hand raised, uh, Donald Swanson.
Mr. Swanson, if you could please just introduce yourself and also, uh, identify your street address?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Donald Swanson. I live at nineteen Brentwood Drive. I'm in a butter to the circle. My backyard butts, uh, what it would be Lot sixty-four. And I, I would like to, uh, comment, uh, on a couple of misconceptions. Brentwood Drive does have a sidewalk. Um, it's continuous, it's not only along parcel sixty-three, but it also continues along, uh, north on Brentwood Drive, goes throughout the, the subdivision. The subdivision has more than one cul-de-sac with a circle. Evergreen Drive is, uh, the other cul-de-sac with the fully completed circle. Um, the circle has a sidewalk that goes around the outside of, 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 of the circle. And, uh, I for one, uh, see no reason not to require the completion of this circle, so it is continuous with all the other, uh, all the other, uh, lots in, in the development. Um, it is a very large development, um, to have one of the streets incomplete, would be a glaring omission. Um, I, I would object to, uh, deviating from the, the requirements of the plan. Um, I understand that there are, uh, there are, is at least one storm drain in the, in the circle also. Um, and, uh, as, as you know, if, if these, if the storm drains aren't completed, uh, we run the risk of, of, uh, these flash floods. Um, there's been a lot of groundwater, uh, appearing, uh, appearing all over Eastern, up and down Bay Road, along, uh, along this area of town. Courtesy, courtesy of the last storm. I, I would object, uh, wholeheartedly to deviating from the standard that was put in place until I could see an engineer, uh, tell me why the, uh, the given, uh, fixtures are no longer needed. Uh, certainly, this, this has nothing to do with, uh, the preferences of the owner of, of one or more of those three lots. This has to do with continuity of the development, uh, and, and the, uh, the, the functional, uh, the functional requirement of, of the storm drain, the curbs, the sidewalk.
Mr. Swanson, can you, can I ask you a question? When, uh, when did you, when did you move into that neighborhood?
Uh, we moved into nineteen ninety-five, twenty-nine years ago. So, we've been here quite a long time.
And, uh, and, and this circle, this circle is- Could I just ask you one more, one more, uh, question there? Uh, was, was the, was the road up at that time?
Yes, it was, it, it looked basically the way it does right now.
Okay. Um, and then, so, question for, uh, Mr. Leonard, you're not asking to waive any of the, the, the storm drain?
No.
Firemas, right?
No, can I, can I speak on that?
Please.
Yeah, no, all the infrastructure, um, there's two existing, um, catch basins, one right here and one right here that catch all the road runoff, the, this is, uh, all paved right now, the straight section, and we had a base coat put on this here about twenty years ago by our family. So, the drainage is already, all the infrastructure, including drainage, is already laid down from forty years ago. Um, there's a, so these two catch basins come into the, to a common, larger, uh, drainage pipe right here with a manhole right there, and then they come out through an easement that was already in place, been in place since the existence of the road. So, I, I, I guess I don't quite understand what, um, what the gentleman's question or concern is with infrastructure. It's already there, has been working fine for forty years. Uh, and we're gonna have, the only thing we're asking for is just no sidewalk here. All the other requirements for the town would be in place, we're just asking for relief from the extent, extension of the sidewalk around the circle part only. The, um, you know, all the other utilities are there, we're gonna have curbing in place uh, as well, and asphalt berm on the interior as well as the exterior, so there will be curbing in place for the town's, uh, satisfaction. So, I guess I don't understand, um, all these aspects.
Bob, if I could just add to that?
Sure.
In fact, um, after Mr. Leonard reached out to us, we met on site, as he mentioned, with Greg Swan, Matt, um, Grosshiedl from the DP, and, and Matt Grosshiedl from the DPW. Um, they were, both required that they, uh, Mr. Leonard have, and his sister have the drainage cambered to make sure that it was functional and working fine. Um, that was done, they provided evidence of that. And the, um, town will ensure that those features are still functioning before recommending acceptance of the roadway in the future.
Stephanie, do we know who's been maintaining, like, you know, during the winter, who plows this street and?
The, I don't know the answer to the question, it may be the town, um.
Mr. Leonard, do you know?
So, I don't know exactly in every storm, I think, because, I think, because there's existing homes here and here that have been there for forty years, and this is all paved, I think, I, I'm sort of speculating here, but I believe the town has just come down here with their passes and cleared this, this area for sure, this straight section. And I believe they've made occasional passes around the cul-de-sac as, it's had a base coat of pavement there for over twenty years, twenty to twenty-five years now, so I believe the town has informally sort of just made a couple passes here during storms. There's also an existing fire hydrant here with, you know, so that's active. So, I think that might be part of what, why the town has done it, but I think it's just all kind of just been, you know, done with the passes from the town, you know, storm by storm basis because of what's there.
Okay. Um, Stephanie, do we have any, any other hands raised?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Uh, any other questions from any board members? Mr. Leonard, this is a public hearing, um, do you want us to close the public hearing?
Um, I don't know if I have a preference, um, I think that's fine if everybody has had all their questions answered. Is, I, I guess I'll, I'll ask Stephanie, Stephanie, is there anything left that I should cover in your, in your mind, or have we explained this well enough, do you think, to everyone's satisfaction?
I, I, I think that's the board's decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's, it, it, it's up to you. Um, we've asked some questions and given you some feedback. Um, once we close the public hearing, we can no longer take in any, uh, evidence or, or testimony in that it'll be up to, uh, myself and my fellow board members to, um, make a decision here, so. Uh, but we can't, we can't move it to that next step un, until we close the public hearing, so I'll I'm gonna throw it back to you again.
Yeah, I, I, I would say, let me check with Donna real quick. Donna, we're good closing it, right?
Yes, we're goo, good to close.
Great, I will, uh, accept a motion.
Motion to close plow, public hearing, Kadham.
Second, kid.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Kadham? Kadham?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetson is aye. Um, in terms of further, uh, deliberations, I mean, I, I, my thoughts on it really haven't, uh, changed. I, I tend to agree with, uh, Kathy's view of this, there's some precedent here. Um, I also kind of think that, uh, for better or for worse, all we're really doing is memorializing something that's exist, a condition that's existed there for, you know, well over thirty-five years at least. Um, so, I mean, those are kind of my thoughts. Anyone have any others? Alright, it's seeing and hearing none, we, I will, uh, accept another motion.
Uh, motion to approve the modification, modification as, um, stated.
Kadham second.
Um, any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, Kadham?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Thank you all.
Great, thank you, board, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie, for all your help these last two years.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Dave, could you stop sharing your screen, please?
Yes. Figure that out. Okay. That's good.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the meeting?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. I'll leave, yeah, I'll leave as well, I think we're, we're done with our business.
Can figure this out?
Party at Owl Ridge Estates. Uh, Stephanie, do we have anyone to present on that?
No, um, Greg Mills asked if he needed to be here tonight, and, um, I indicated I didn't think that was necessary. Is, the board will remember, um, or again, members of the board will remember that this was a subdivision that was, and let me get back to that, because I think my things are a little out. Let's see. Um, that was approved by the board in twenty twenty-two, I believe. And the applicant proceeded with constructing the roadway. Um, and it's constructed to a point where they have the binder course down. We had street inspections done by Patrick Brennan from, um, PGB Engineering, and, uh, Mr. Patrick confirmed that all the work that was done was done to standard and that, um, he provided a road cost estimate, which was provided in your binder, um, that showed that the remaining work was with a three over, um, a three-year year-over-year inflation of ten percent is a hundred ninety thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-six cents, and Mr. Mills has submitted a, um, tripartite lender's agreement in that amount, as well as a signed copy of the the surety agreement that we require a company that. So, uh, my recommendation to the board is that you can vote to accept the surety and, uh, vote to sign both documents.
Okay, um, any questions from board members?
Yeah, and I, I have a question for, uh, Stephanie. Uh, I am reading here the list of the cost of each one of the items here.
Yeah.
Who, who actually put this list and how is confirmed that this is right?
So, this is what we contract Patrick to do, to stay up to date on what current costs are. Um, so, he indicates the, he calculates based on the length of the road, the width of the road, and the elements that are included, the components like the stormwater management components, um, curbing, all of that. He calculates how much of each of the different materials are needed. Um, he ensures their current costs, and then he completes the form, the road cost estimate.
Yeah. Yeah, because my, if I remember all the, we have several interactions because of the issue of drainage and wetlands and all all the issues with this property, and I was wondering if this, uh, estimate is taking in consideration the complexity of that.
Yes. Yes. And I can tell you that the, um, the developer has been in touch, um, Jen Carlini, who is the town's land use planner, conservation agent. She's been out and inspected and, um, is very satisfied with the care of the work that's being conducted out there and, and has had no problems with, um, sultation or erosion out at the site, which are the normal things from a wetlands perspective you're looking for, no intrusion of materials into the wetland resources.
Well, I will put forward, uh, motion to accept the surety for the amount of one ninety-five eighty-six and to endorse the attached tripartite lender agreement for that security.
Do I have a second?
Second, kid.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Kadham?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Alright, uh, the, the next one, the next one is on Old Forge Commons. This is just an architectural review. This, on this whole project, I've been recusing myself for quite some time, and I'm gonna have to do that again. I guess before I, I jump off, we have to, um, install a, uh, a temporary chairman for the, uh, for, for this, uh, proceeding, um. I, I guess, Stephanie, can we just do that by vote, or can we just assign it based on seniority? What should we do?
I, I think the board can kind of decide either. I think either would be appropriate.
Well, I'll, but, Amos, Kathy?
Oh, it's all yours, Amos.
Okay.
Okay, before you jump off, Bob, um, so we have a presentation from Ed Hands, so you'll be coming back?
Yep, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'm just gonna jump off just for this one.
Right.
How you doing?
So, I, and I'm going to let everyone know, I am going to, um, just hop downstairs for a minute because Ed Hands, I have been talking with him for several days, but he is downstairs, I think, for the select boards meeting because they're reviewing the CPA articles tonight. Um, but I, I don't know why that didn't catch my mind earlier, but I'm going to go down and bring them up to do the presentation from here.
Alright, and if, if, if it takes a little bit of time and, um, there's some downtime, we can always talk about the Economic Development Council in your absence.
Yes, okay, alright.
I'll be back shortly, thank you.
Hey, guys.
Hello there.
So, um, I'm going to show you the two houses that we're getting ready to start. So, Dwight, I gotta ask this, Amos, Dwight, Kathy, how do I, do I hit share screen first and then pull the plan up, or do I hit the plan then share screen? Do you guys know?
No. I don't know, Amos do know?
Uh, i- if, if you pull it up, uh, it will be-
I think I pull it up and then I hit share screen.
Well, then you share screen.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you can, I, you need to open that, that file, needs to be activated.
Oh, it is, I got a PDF right here, let me open, let me- Oh, it is. I got a PDF right here. Let me open, let me.
So, share that screen, or you can share the application too.
Hold on a second. Let's see, let's see if I did it correctly.
If, if it is your screen, needs to be on the screen. Something is coming up.
Let's see, nope, did the wrong one. Got them all.
Uh, I, I, we, we can see your home screen, the desktop.
Right now, you're seeing all my desktop. Let me see if this, let me open it up. How about now? How's that?
Now, now we see it, yes.
Yes, all right, not bad, not bad. All right, so this is the first one we'll do. Uh, so this is lot eight. And this is the first affordable, because I have two affordables that are going up in the, as you know, in the subdivision. So this is the first one. And this is going on lot eight. Now, basically, so all of our houses in there have, they're all the same. Same roof shingles, they're all the same architectural, and they're all black too. My whole subdivision is black. I know you guys don't care about the colors, but that's my. Intention is try, I'm trying to create this farmhouse look. And, um, so we've got all the same. Everything in there is the four over one windows, so you see the grill pattern, one, two. But every house is, every time I bring a house there, it's the same thing. I use the up above, I use the, uh, vinyl board and bat. I use the vinyl clapboard, I use the, uh, hobby vinyl windows. It, excuse me, I'm sorry, and every house has the farmer's porch. This is what, I think, the ninth plan I brought for you guys? Every house has the same farmer's porch. I do make variations of garage doors. I allow them to have cross box panels. This one has four windows, some of them have two windows, so I allow them to pick four or five different garage doors and front doors. But, everything else is the same.
I don't know where we can hear voices.
I see Suzanne, but I don't know if she knows.
No, it's Stephanie walking to her office, talking to. Okay, keep, keep going.
Okay, okay, I was, so anyway, this is, so I'll show you the, so this is a front app, front elevation here. Um, this is the right side elevation of the home. Left side elevation of the home. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is rear elevation, I'm sorry, rear elevation of the home, and this is the left side elevation of the home.
Yeah, yeah, we cannot see it, but I, I will imagine it's there, the, uh, height to the medium of the roof.
Yeah, yeah, hold on, it's, they're all, this one is, I get, I gotta open up a little bit, hold on, one point one. They're all the same, they're all between twenty-five to thirty, every single one. Depends on how deep the house is. The deeper the house, the higher it is because of the roof pitch. So this one is about twenty, so it's twenty-four, eleven, plus one, one, so it's about twenty-six square. Twenty-six lineal feet to the roof. And all my roof pitches too, I want to show you something. All my roof pitches are the same. I want to show you that on a plan, hold on. Let me go to the, a section on it. Come on, where is it? It's hard when you don't have the full plan. Okay, here it is right here. So, see these numbers right here on the roof?
Yeah.
That says eight twelve, so that's an eight, eight pitch. The garage is a nine pitch, so I go all high pitched roofs on my homes too. I don't have flat roofs like you see on a typically, like on a raised ranch. That's why you see in the front of the homes, they have a really nice look to them. See that, see how? See what I'm doing here with the, so this here is actually a twelve pitch, and then in the background is an eight pitch. Just gives it some nice look. So that's that farmhouse look we're trying to create. And then, I, like all my other houses, I have the, uh. PVC decking, PVC posts, everything PVC, everything's plastic, so no ma- low maintenance.
Yeah, I, I, I have a generic question. This is an affordable one?
This is the affordable one, yes, yes.
Okay, and, uh, if you were to mention the difference between this one and the others from the point of view of. The cost of the house, what, what will be the main items?
Just the inside. The outside costs just as much. I'm actually building another house that's almost. It's this same house plan, but I'm going with a different garage door, different front door. And I'm gonna do a little change in this here, but it's the same house plan. So the only difference between this plan here. Of cost, the frame costs the same, all the siding, windows, doors, everything's the same. The difference is in the inside, which. That is the control for just me. I, I have the control of everything that goes inside the home. So I have to do with, with the, uh, the only thing I have to do is, this is a four-bedroom home, by the way, which you can see, I know this doesn't have to do with you guys, but I'll just show you anyway.
Hmm.
So, you'll see here, you go through the front door, they have a, a bedroom on the first floor with a full bathroom. And the back of the house has a open kitchen, living room, dinette area, all opened up. And then on the second floor. Is three more, I'm sorry, went the wrong way. Okay, there we go. On the second floor. You come up the staircase, big open up area here, and there's three more bedrooms upstairs. So this is a four-bedroom design, so we have to do one four-bedroom and we have to do one three-bedroom. This is the bigger house, this is the four-bedroom. So I have to meet a certain square footage, which I'm going bigger than what they require, because I don't want it to look small in the neighborhood. Um, so this one's about almost sixteen hundred square feet, and with a two-car garage, oversized two-car garage, nine-foot garage doors. So it's a ni- it's a nice house plan. You wouldn't be able to tell, no one would be able to tell the difference of this house and any of the other houses in there.
That, that, that was, that was my question, uh.
Oh, you wouldn't be able to.
Don't want to create the poor house in the neighborhood, that's.
No, no.
Okay.
A lot of people in Easton would want to own this poor house, believe me. A lot of people, it's a beautiful house plan.
Yeah, they, they still pay good money, I would assume.
Um, it's, they're getting into this for a very good price. The, the numbers are very good for them. I'm happy for them. It's, that's the deal that we have, so. It's a beautiful home that they're getting into. So this is lot eight. So I went over this earlier with Suzanne. The next house that we're doing is a house we've already built. In this neighborhood, so she said, uh, oops, sorry, so let me share another one, hold on, guys, sorry. Is that, can you see this one? Is that shared? Oh, good, good. So this is lot, this is the same house I've already built in there. This is the same house as lot nine, and also lot fourteen. The difference is, though, what I've done is I've changed, I've put some bump outs on the front, which you'll see here. Um, put a, a different type of window here, different type of front door setup, but it's basically, you've guys already seen this plant twice. Lot nine and lot fourteen, it's the same house. It's just, um, I just make some changes, um, just to, so when you go in there. It is the same house, but really it doesn't look like it. So what I did is I went with, I bumped this front area out two feet. Then I went with double windows here, double windows here, where the other houses have single, single, then one, two, three singles, so I went double, double, just mixed it up. And this house, I'll give you the height on this one, hold on one second, give me one moment. This one's twenty-nine plus one, so this one's about thirty-one feet tall. And has, um, roof pitch, you can see it has high roof pitch here, it's all a ten pitch. So this is the rear elevation here. Side elevation here, this is on the left side of the home, and, oh, there's a floor plan. So it's, let me show you that, I'm sorry, I'm missing one elevation, sorry, guys, hold on. One, two, all right, front elevation. Right side elevation, a lot of windows in the first floor here, they just wanted that. They have, because this is, this floor plan here, people love this floor plan, that's why I've sold three of them, because. Um, the first floor is all, look at how wide open this is, that's basically twenty, twenty-two feet this way. By twenty-six feet this way, a giant room, that's kitchen, dinette, and living room, all wide open. People love this wide open plan. And it has a fireplace here, large kitchen with island, has a, uh, walk-in pantry on the back of the house. Has a mudroom area over here, it's a real nice, and they have, he's, uh, works out of his home, so he wanted an office here. This could be a four-bedroom home. Again, we have sewer here, so it doesn't matter, it could be ten bedrooms, but this office could be a bedroom if they ever resold it, they just have to put a closet in it, so. And that is it, that's my show for tonight. Thank you for listening.
Stephanie, you have any? Things to add?
I don't, um, I looked at these, and as Mr. Humphrey pointed out, they are very similar in design. Um, they're complementary designs to the others that have been previously approved, and the materials are, um, similar. And, um. I, I think they fit in with what's been approved in the past.
And Stephanie, also, I'm following the plan with you guys. This is house number ten, and the affordable is house number eleven, as in the, in the.
Right.
Agreement.
Yep.
So, are, are many more houses to go on the development?
Uh, well, I have, you're gonna see me in a, at the next meeting with three more, so I'm starting five, so I'll have. Coming, uh, the end of the summer, I'll have maybe, well, I'll have more houses going. I'll probably have by the fall, I'll only have four house lots left. I'll be finishing up this winter, I'll be finishing in less than what I said. It's going good.
Well, that, that was the intention of the question, how long is development until it's finished?
Uh, we'll be doing the, uh, finished road in spring of twenty twenty-five, right, when we basically. Well, we actually did late spring, which we did in May of twenty twenty-three is when we did the pavement of the base coat, and we'll be doing the, doing the top coat. Of two years later, twenty twenty-five, and we'll be done, we'll be done that spring.
Okay, do we have anyone from the public, uh, Stephanie?
Um, hold on one moment. I don't see anyone.
So. We are only two members now, right?
Right.
So we, we, do we conduct the vote?
Yeah, I, I think the board, again, because it, they're, they're not, there's nothing dramatically different about these than what you've approved in the past, so I think the board can. That the two members can vote to approve.
So, I will lead the motion.
So, motion to approve the architectural review of lot three and lot eight?
Yeah.
Forge Commons.
So, uh, any, who, who give the second? Okay, I will assume that the chair can, in this case, uh, give the second, so second, Kevin. And, any questions?
Yes. So we also, after we do the approved plan, we have to do the approve. Of the staking and the cutting of the trees. Will somebody be able to do that in the next week, week or so? After I have them staked out, you know how we do the walk of the lot and just see what we can save, et cetera.
So I think Peter has been doing most of those.
He has.
Use right from the start, um, so it would need to be either another board member, or you'd need to, I, I think the way the decision is written. That it's either a board member or the planning director, if authorized by the board.
Is Peter gone?
Yes, Peter resigned about a month ago.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, he was a good guy. Oh, that's too bad.
So.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's approve this first, and then we just. So, hearing none, uh, any favor, kid?
Aye.
Kevin? Aye. So that we approve this, uh, the, the issue is a kind of permit for cleaning trees?
So, Amos, you'll remember, and I, I think this project was approved before Kathy was a member. Um, you'll remember that there were a number of trees that the board had hoped could be saved, um, and. The board, um, and Mr. Humphrey agreed that as Mr. Humphrey was clearing lots, a board member would go out. Walk the site, the subject site, the lot site, and, um. Determine which trees or confirm which trees could be cut.
Amos, I, I stake the house too, I stake the house.
You stake the house and, yeah.
And I spray the trees that have to come down for construction. It's really a quick, it's a five-minute meeting. It's really quick, so.
Okay, I, I, I can assume that and go and approve, uh. And you will need to coordinate with me at night?
Yep, I can, I'll, yeah, I, Stephanie, I'll, why don't, Stephanie, you want me to talk to you next week after I get them staked, and we'll figure something out?
Yeah, and I can put you in touch, uh, uh, probably directly with Amos. To coordinate.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you, she will give you my email.
Okay, thanks, Amos. Okay, very good, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Uh, Bill, make sure you stop sharing your screen.
I'm doing it right now, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm leaving.
All right, and I am going to share my screen with the presentation. Ed Hands is here. Okay, can everybody see the memorial park proposal? Okay, I'm trading seats with Ed while he does the presentation.
That's the screen I look at, right?
Yes, I can move it there.
No, no, that's fine, it's, well, it's confusing enough. Hello, everybody, uh, I'm Ed Hands, and, um.
I know.
Yes, you know, I know you know, Amos.
Oh, yeah, Lions.
Yeah, we're, we're fellow Lions, and beyond being Lions, um, we're, um, um. Longtime associates here in, in town government as well. So, um, back in December twenty twenty-one, uh, this board of selectmen. Uh, acted on an idea, uh, to create a memorial park. Uh, down in Forest Village as part of the, uh, growth of, uh, the neighborhood, part of which you guys were just talking about. And, uh, so, uh, we've moved forward, and, uh, we'd like to give you a little bit of an update. So, uh, the park, uh, that we are proposing to build will look like this. Uh, it's, um. Uh, changed quite a bit from, uh, the, the beginning idea, and, um. The reason we decided to put it here is that way back in nineteen thirty-four, um, uh, relatives of, um, Lawrence Swift. Uh, donated this land as a park to the town. Lawrence Swift was a, um, medical orderly in World War One. Who died treating people that had the, uh, that had the flu. And we thought it might be an appropriate idea to upgrade the park, uh, provide a new amenity, uh, for the, um. For the neighborhood and, uh, honor our first responders from the pandemic, as well as those who responded back in nineteen eighteen. So let's take a look, I, maybe, maybe let's take.
Do you want, do you want?
Yeah, could you?
Yes, yes, because, yeah.
So, uh, Forest Village has a long history, um, many of you know that cannonballs were produced here for the Revolutionary War. And, um, this is a, this is a PDF version of our slideshow, so bear with us as we bring things quickly onto the screen. Um, most of us today think of, uh, Furnace Village as, uh, as an east-to-west neighborhood, as we zoom through from five corners up to Target. But in reality, the original neighborhood was much more north to south. The foundry was right along Foundry Street, but workers' housing. Uh, was down on, on Highland Street and up on, uh, the Quonica, and the central focus point was what is today Swift's Park. Uh, in the nineteenth century, there was even a bandstand there. Um, so what we would like to do is recreate this neighborhood core. And connect the major, uh, mixed-use parts of the neighborhood, um, that are gonna be served by a future sidewalk, but we don't want to wait for a sidewalk. Next, please. And this is, um, a picture of, of the site after it was attacked by the Ukrainian drone force. Um, it's, it's a little bit squished, but, uh, uh, obviously, uh, across the street where you see the asphalt. Um, is where, uh, the new, uh, uh, development is going in by Mr. Lincoln, uh, and, um. If you know Arlene Keach, that's her, uh, her building, uh, up in the back, uh, and, uh, yeah, right here. Rick Lincoln has just. Finished the redevelopment of the old Belcher House on the other corner, so it's right on the corner of, uh, Foundry and the Quonica. Next. So every time I look at this slide, uh, it makes me feel very old, because back in nineteen seventy-four, I was there to dedicate that original marker. Back in nineteen seventy four, I was there to dedicate that original marker, uh, for Furnace Village, and then ten years later, I was still there. Uh, to, uh, move the marker and. Put Swift's Park on on the other side to celebrate the fact that Furnace Village. Had been turned into a National Register of Historic District. So why are we doing this? We're trying to revitalize the, uh, the, uh, park, recognize the heroes. Who lost their lives in, uh, nineteen eighteen and twenty twenty, uh, recreate the original village core. Uh, follow the recreation, uh, and open space plan. Which says that every neighborhood should have mini parks, and this would be the mini park for Furnace Village. As part of our development project, we realized that Swift's Park could also serve as a trailhead. For the conservation land over, uh, new and old ponds and as a rest stop for pedestrians and and bicyclists. Uh, one of the big questions we get from people is, well, how does anybody get to this island? In the middle of one of the busiest streets of, uh, of Eastern, and the answer is sometime, uh, in the next few months. A light will be put in at the corner of Pecanica and Foundry at a crosswalk, so people will be able to cross over. Uh, and and, uh, from the new development and walk down from the Pecanica area. And then finally, this is part of, um, the revitalization process of this whole area between. Um, five corners and and Target. Next. So we do have a timeline and the question is, why now? And we've done a lot of research, uh, and math. Uh, which I've checked several times to make sure that it was accurate. I'm not a mathematician. But, um, basically, the reason we're recommending this now is that if we wait until the. Uh, sidewalks are put in and the entire Foundry Street, um, project is is done, the the cost would go from. An initial seven hundred and sixty four thousand dollars to over a million dollars, uh, which, um, it was. Controversial as far as funding that seven hundred and sixty four thousand dollars, you could imagine what it would be at a million dollars at a time when. Um, uh, property taxes had gone up, uh, to fund other parts of, uh, our redevelopment. So, um. The things you can see here in green, um. Are are planning, uh, and, uh, for the development here, so we've had strarets and. And, uh, a whole bunch of 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 things. This is a well-planned, um. Development area and we're sticking a park right in the middle of it, I'll. Next. Very quickly, it does meet the criteria for CPA funding, and the important thing about that is. Um, after a lot of discussion and a lot of revision to the park design, uh, CPC voted. Um, to, uh, support the project and even as we speak, Tom Bruce artists downstairs presenting that to the selectmen. Next. So one of the reasons that, uh, w- we want a project down here is that, uh, from. Two thousand and two, when we passed the CPA till last year, there were a hundred and twenty two C. A hundred and twenty CPC projects and fifty five of them were in Northeastern, and they cost twenty two million dollars. Of CPC funds, um, CPC spending in Northeastern. Preserved historic buildings, expanded public parks, and increased residential housing. Meanwhile, there were three projects in Furnace Village and, um. Normally, as a, as a committed son of Southeastern, I'd be moaning and groaning about all of this, but in reality, what's happened is. This CPC funding has focused and recreated a very vibrant neighborhood in Northeastern. Which is, um. Has, um, uh, new housing, uh, new stores. And is creating new tax revenue, so it was a, it was a win, I think, and we'd like to have a win in another, uh, another part of town. Next.
I wanna add there too, new restaurants, which Dale Karister keeps, um, bringing up. That they wanna see more of those down in Furnace Village.
Yes. So the big question is, can we revitalize an important historic neighborhood? In a part of town with no public parks for a tiny percentage of the investments in similar projects located in Northeastern? Next. The committee is a large one and includes a lot of, um, uh, people from the public safety area. Uh, from the neighborhood and, uh, we've worked very hard, uh, we hired a designer. Um, and they presented us with three options. You can see two of the options here. We dismiss these, first of all, because of their higher cost, and we don't think. They're they're more of an urban park look, uh, and it didn't really fit with the neighborhood, so. This is ultimately what we came up with. This is the third option. Uh, basically, the white lines you see are, um, concrete pathways. Many of which are surrounded by, uh, stone walls, uh, the. The stone walls are there for aesthetics, but, um, as we learned at the CPC this year, it it also prevents little kids from running into the street. Uh, which is something that we're, uh, we're funding up at, um, uh, the park on Chestnut Street, so, um, it's good. Uh, there's gonna be a memorial wall, which will recognize the first responders and also have pictures of some of the historic. Uh, events that occurred in Furnace Village, for instance, um. This is a place, we know that the first call to duty for our Minutemen came. We know that they produce cannonballs. We don't really remember the fact that the foundries in the beginning part of the nineteenth century. Produced machine parts for the looms at Lowell. Leading to interchangeable parts and, um, you know, all the stuff that we have today, so that's proven to be very important. We're also gonna put in, uh, a bike rack area with, uh, an air pump, sort of like we have in front of the town hall. And, uh, we're hoping, depending on how things work out, to have a spigot like we have at, um. The community garden so that people could fill up a water bottle if they if they needed to. Um, the northern part of the, uh, of of the park, oh, well, first of all, we we. Closed off the old access road and added a little bit of space right there, yep, and then finally. Uh, at the northern part, we, uh, cleaned up the lines so that the parking is more accessible than it was before. Next. So we were charged, um. Very, 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 very directly with reducing the cost. There was too much, uh, money at seven hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. Uh, and when we added in things like escalation and incidentals, it got up to almost a million dollars right now. However, by reducing the cost, by, um. Cutting back mostly on landscaping and, uh, and, uh, a dry central feature rather than a fountain. Um, coming up with a realistic plan for donations, which, uh, we're about to implement. And, um. And, um. A, uh, uh, the DPW is basically gonna be doing some initial site work. Uh, and they also had some suggestions which would help us cut down a little bit on the on the cost. So that is, uh, essentially what the new cost is and approximately what the CPC approved. Next. Here are some of the proposals. Oh, this is the full version. This is nice, so, uh, we spent a long time talking about, uh. The most efficient and inexpensive, uh, use of concrete, and basically, we're gonna be using exposed aggregate concrete. It's, uh, the least expensive, the longest lasting, and the least slippery when wet. Um, the granite walls are scheduled to be capped with a, a concrete pop so that they can serve as places for people to sit. And we anticipate in the green spaces, people sitting on the walls and, um, attending events there.
Okay, you want me to kind of skip?
Yeah.
Because I didn't realize this was.
Yeah, this is, this is the big one, and and we're very proud of how we spent, uh, a long time trying to cut the, uh. Uh, the prices down, so, uh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stop on any of these. I'd like to go back to that one, though. The one before that. Right there, so, um. One of the criticisms that I've heard on social media, uh, and. Keep patting myself on my shoulders that I don't do social media, but I hear about it, uh, is, uh, it costs a lot of money, and indeed it does. Uh, but if you look at some of the projects that we've done over the years, uh, back in two thousand and two, the very first CPC project was the Rockery. It cost the CPC a hundred thousand dollars. We got grants from the state and the federal government. Uh, for a total cost, uh, of two hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. That would cost today. Four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars, and you can see all the other ones, um. The one I'd like to point out the most because I grumble about this all the time is the pickleball court. Um, pickleball court, uh, we came in with savings on on what was approved, but it still cost. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and they weren't required to come up with any donations to make that work. So that's a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar project, and then finally, at the bottom, the new playground at Richardson Olmstad. Uh, the CPC put out, um, three and a half million dollars for that. So that's, um. Four times bigger than what we're asking for, uh, Swift's Park. All right, now we can go on.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that just. Oh. The slide before this basically talks about our, our, um, donation program right here. So we're going with four levels of donations, and then we're gonna be selling pavers so that people can honor. Um, uh, either first responders or people who passed away, uh, during the events, and we're also gonna be looking at grim, uh, grants. Uh, my co-chair, John Ventresco, and I are having a meeting tomorrow, uh, to push this forward. We'd like to have, uh, as many, um. Dollars in the bank, uh, before town meeting, uh, uh, from donations. And then the la- the last slide. Uh, something we wanna point out to everybody is that CPC projects do not raise the tax rate. Okay, uh, property tax contributions are capped by law at three percent. Local funds are supplemented. Uh, by the, uh, state annually, that's about a third of what we take in, and these funds form a bank that can only be used. For historical preservation, open space, and recreation, and affordable housing. They can't be used to balance the town of, uh, the town budget. It's not a rainy day fund. It can only be used for those things. And then you can see what we've done over the last five years. We've taken in almost ten million dollars. Uh, and that works out to be about two million dollars a year, more than enough money to pay for this project. Even if we don't get a diamond donations, and we already have five hundred and fifty dollars in donations because we just opened our account. Uh, today with the approval of the selectmen. So I'm very, very mu- much i- into this idea of a of a park. Uh, and parks are wonderful, but I think the fact that it's a memorial park is really important. Um, think back a couple of years ago to the COVID crisis, you know, we were all housebound. Some of us were first responders. Um. I was, uh, I was a housebound first responder, working with, uh, with kids, uh, from Stonehill. Who were, uh, student teaching in various schools in the area, um, and during the COVID crisis. My cousin passed away. Now, lots of people lost relatives, and it was tough. He was. He's my, was my closest relative, but the thing that really pushed me towards the park was what happened. As he was, as he was dying, uh. You know, back in those days, uh, people weren't allowed to go in and see their loved ones. Well, this nurse in Ohio. Put my, my cousin's wife in a hazmat suit and brought her in so that she could hold his hand. Um. And as as he passed, and those were the kind of people, and we had those folks here, uh. You know, our fire and police folks, uh. Working up at a- at Eastern Lincoln, which had, um, the highest density of illness in our town, so. All of these people, whether they're firemen, policemen, teachers, or even the folks that bagged our groceries. During, uh, the crisis, I think, deserve some recognition. Doing some research around the country, we could be one of the very, very first, um, communities to recognize the first responders, so. What we're looking for from you guys, as, uh, has happened with the Historical Commission, uh, and the Board of Selectmen. Is, uh, just a letter of, of support for this project that we can present at town meeting, so. That's, that's my spiel, and sorry that it took so long.
Well, thank you very much for, uh, a wonderful presentation and, um. You know, certainly, the park right there kind of fits in with the things that. Uh, this board has been talking about for that air, you know, for that area for. Past six years that I've been on the board and and probably a lot longer than that. Um, you know, I think it'll, it'll tie in really nicely, uh, with with, uh, what what's, what's, you know, we have planned or. And what everyone has in store for that area, particularly when the road gets, uh, done over and, you know, we've got some sidewalks. Uh, it's gonna be a a fantastic addition down there and and certainly checks a number of boxes for us. Um, one thing, and it, you know, certainly you touched on the the memorial aspect of it, which I think is really, really unique and and wonderful. Uh, you you also mentioned during your presentation that you guys have thought about doing some events down there. What kind of events have you? Um, thought about or proposed?
Well, this is a very special neighborhood. I've been working down there, like I said, since nineteen seventy four, and the people certainly. Um, grouped together as a neighborhood. They have a neighborhood association, uh, that's active in town government, but it's also very proud of its. History, so I think this is a perfect area for an annual walk party. Uh, I think it's an area where, uh, we can, we can commemorate the ultimate first responders, the Minutemen who. Uh, left the Foundry area, grabbed their muskets and marched up Bay Road to to Boston. Um, I think, uh, I I'd like to see some music down there. There is gonna be electricity. Uh, and the reason for that is, some of you may remember that there's a private house up there now. That once upon a time was Harmony Hall, and it was Harmony Hall back in the days when most neighborhoods in Eastern. Had their own band and bandstand, and that's where the bandstand was, right there where our, our, um. Uh, statue was gonna be. So those would be events that we could have there.
Well, thank you for that, uh, Amos, Kathy, any questions for Mr. Hands?
No.
Nope.
I'm unfamiliar, I'm in the CPC, so.
Yes, I think you might have heard this one before. Good to see you, Kathy, too.
Nice to see you, Ed.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Boy, well, thank you for pivoting. A very much COVID, COVID term, right?
Yep.
It's a, it's a very commendable project.
Agreed.
Okay.
All right, uh, well, the, uh. Next item on board business is the Planning Board Rep for the Economic Development Council. I know that, um. Stephanie sent around, uh, basically a description of what this role is. Stephanie, do you wanna comment any further on on that?
Yeah, I I apologize for not thinking of sending it out earlier with the binder. It was, um, Mickey's. Question about the word that made me think, oh, that would be helpful. Um, it was. The Economic Development Council was formed out of one of the action items identified in the two thousand and fourteen master plan. Um, the original intent was that, and I'm going to use my own words, but would be like ambassadors. Uh, between the. Uh, local governance, governance and the business owners, um, kind of keeping, uh. Take the pulse of what was going on in the business community, maybe some of the challenges they were facing. And bring that back to the town so that if there were policy changes that would be, um, make sense to help. Um, owners and property owners and business owners that the town could consider those. Um, as well as to communicate to the community, the business community. The investments that the town was making, so that people understood, um, what the town. Had heard in the past is being necessary to support local businesses, so, you know, certainly like the Seward District, um, along. Queesit to Belmont, the board and the town, uh, adopted some new zoning that, um, they felt would help trigger. New growth in that district. That um they felt would help trigger new growth in that district. We also have conducted as the Economic Develop- Development Council several outreach, outreach on efforts. With that community and one of the things that we've heard over and over again is. That if you want that to be a walkable neighborhood, there need to be improvements along Washington Street. And we've had conversations, staff has had conversations with Mass D, 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 DOT. I wanted to say TPW, Mass DOT about sidewalk improvements and. We know that they were um evaluating and doing surveys of. The road of um Route one thirty eight between Depot Street and Belmont Street. Um to see if they could undertake a road diet there. Which means that it would be reduced from the four lanes that it is on that, in that single strip. Um down to three lanes with a turning lane in the middle, which would allow for expansion of. The sidewalks and um a bike path. So. Um we'll be checking back in with them. That conversation started a couple of years. We've been talking with Mass DOT about the roadway for a number of years. But doing the surveys and really starting to think about. Making those roadway improvements has only um kind of escalated over the last couple of years. But things like that. So it's really um kind of an outreach and um getting input back from the community. Their primary activities over the last few years have been holding a annual business forum. Partnering with the Chamber of Commerce um at the last two. Representatives from the administration, the town administration. Were present to give updates. That included um the town administrator, the chair of the select board. The chair of the Economic Development Council, who is a member of the select board and myself. And also hearing from local business owners and um. We also, um a couple of the business forums featured uh some of the new developers. De- development, featured developers talking about some of their new development, like Doug King was talking about. The Quissette Commons Project in the past, so. They meet quarterly on the second Tuesday. And they meet at eleven o'clock in the morning via Zoom.
Alright, um.
And.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
I, I was going to say, Mi- Mickey said she um, she would be willing to serve unless someone else. Had a strong interest in serving.
Amaz, Kathy?
Motion, motion to have Nikki serving.
I'll go ahead and second that one. I guess uh in, in absentia, uh. Uh this is for uh Economic Development Council Rep uh and Mickey, Kedham?
I.
Kathy, uh Kid?
I.
And Stetsons and I as well. Alright.
And so. Yeah, the next step will be that um we will notify the select board that that's your recommendation. And then they will need to vote to actually appoint Mickey.
I see. Okay, very good.
Well, we, we pass uh the previous subject. Who is going to write the letter for the select, for the. Uh Sweet Park? Can you do that, Bob?
Yeah, how would we, I mean, that's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up. I, I mean, so he's looking for a letter of recommendation. I mean, it sounds.
A, a letter of support.
Letter of support. And, I mean, uh do we, we don't need to, do we need to vote on that?
Uh, yes, you should.
Oh, we do. Okay. Uh, well, I, I mean, I'm certainly in, in, in favor of it. Um, I, I get the sense that. Amaz certainly is. Kathy? Yeah, so, alright, well, I'll take a motion then.
Motion, motion to write a letter of recommendation for Sweet Park.
Uh, second, Kathy, Kid.
Alright, uh any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Kedham?
I.
Kid?
I.
Stetsons and I as well. So Stephanie, does, how does that work? Do, do you draft something up and then circulate it for comment?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, and um when do they need that by?
Uh before town meeting, um.
Okay.
And, you know, I think, yeah.
Alright, so.
We'll try to get it to, I, I guess to the select board. Because it, I mean, the select board is voting tonight. I think by, they probably have already voted. On the CPA articles and Ed had done a presentation. To the select board for Swift's Park back the beginning of February. And um they were very responsive um and, and supportive at that time. So I would be surprised if they. Did not vote to recommend tonight.
Well, and I think our um, our letters should really focus in on sort of the walkable aspect of.
Mm-hmm.
We've been talking about for, you know, a lot of years. This just seems to.
Yeah, the, the development of this area as a real residential area. As, as we plan or, and it's reflected on the bylaws too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be the tie, definitely a tie-in is that this is really kind of the capstone. On the zoning changes and the new development that we've seen even to date in, in the area and the interest.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Alright, so we'll look forward to seeing a draft of that. Um and next up, we have uh two ZBA requests for comments on special permits. The first one is one fifty nine Washington Street. Stephanie, do you wanna tell us about that one?
Um, so this. Is a house that is over seventy five years old and the owner was looking to renovate it. And had submitted a permit, um a, a building permit requesting to remove the or. Um, to remove two porches, one on the front and one on, on the back. Uh what happened is once the owner started pulling off the. Add-ons, he discovered that there was a lot of rot and damage to the house. And that it wasn't going to be worth saving. Um. He did get kind of a, a cease and desist because the house was over seventy five years old and he had started to demolish it. If anyone's been um up on North Washington and noticed, you will see there is basically just this. It's actually a tiny little addition. Kathy's nodding her head. Um. And it should have gone for demolition review. Uh they did do a subsequent, uh and after the fact with the Historical Commission. But what he wants to do now, and why that piece was left after even meeting with the Historical Commission. Is that in order for him to reconstruct a two-family on the site. It, he needs to um. There has to be something there and he has to get the permits first. So he needs a special permit from. That, I think he needs a variance from Board of Appeals and then he'll need a special permit. For what he is proposing, which is a duplex from the Planning and Zoning Board. So this is just for a recommendation for the Board of Appeals tonight. And I guess it's a special permit in both cases for the Board of Appeals because of the non-conformity.
Well, so it's, wait a second, was this, was it a duplex? Was there a duplex?
It was a two-family.
Okay, um. Alright. So it's a special permit. With this, how, how, it, how is this a, like a double special permit situation?
We, what, uh, okay, because it's a non-conformity and I, let me pull it up. I am not the expert on non-conformities because these usually get, they, they get um. What is the word I wanna say?
Well, they're usually addressed through variances, right?
Well, they go, they start with the building inspector acting as the zoning enforcement officer. Right. And he provides guidance on whether it's something that's allowed, which is usually with the residential. If it's a rebuild, if it's um a voluntary.
How much?
A voluntary demolition and a rebuild. So if you just bear with me for a minute, because. I ha- I absolutely have to refer to the code every time this comes up.
Okay.
So, a non-conforming structure, the Board of Appeals may award a special permit to reconstruct. Extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure. In accordance with this section, only if it de- determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, et cetera, shall not be substantially more detrimental. Than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. That, so because there's a portion of the building still existing. The applicant can go to the Board of Appeals to seek that special permit. If he demolished it completely, it's a, it's a whole different story and he'd have to seek variance.
Okay. And then, so if the Board of Appeals were to approve it, it would just, would it come back to us in some fashion?
It comes back to you because in the business district, it requires a special permit for a two-family.
I see. Alright, um.
So the first is just the special permit to allow the non-conformity to continue to exist. With a new structure or extension, expansion of the existing structure.
Okay, and the, I mean, there's, it's really, it's, as I recall, I mean, it's right in between like two. Commercial properties, basically, right?
Right, yep.
This is the, it's right by the um. The coffee shop there.
It's not behind the coffee shop. It's a little further north, but I think it is it Kathy, is it north of the, there's a little. Um, I'm going to call it a little strip mall, but it's the kind of strip mall you wanna see. It looks like it was an old structure that was. Converted to commercial uses. There's a nail, um some type of salon and some kind of consulting. If it's a green.
And, and it runs like east to west.
Yes.
So it, it's, you don't, you don't have a big, it's not taking a big footprint. Yeah, and they, they, I noticed that driving up one thirty eighth the other day and how it was just like, it's basically. Maybe twenty by twenty left of the house and everything else has been chopped down off of the property. The trees have been taken down. Um, yeah, I wondered what had happened there.
Yeah, that, yes.
Well, I feel like it's kind of been sitting there for a while.
Kind of abandoned for, I think it's been.
Yeah, I think this fellow has owned it for at, at least two or three years, as I understand it, and has been trying to figure out what to do with it. He had wanted to make it into a multifamily, um but the lot just wasn't large enough under the current. Multifamily zoning, um and things like that. So he finally decided he was just going to rehabilitate it. As the two-family that it was and ran into these problems with the rot and everything.
The, I, I have a question. The, the approval by the Board of Appeal. It determines the size of the house or just determine that it's approval. For demolition and construction of a, a new duplex that. Will need to come for approval to us. I, I, it is, I, I don't know if the Board of Appeal will. Put any limitations on size or.
They, they gen- I think they would. I mean, that's basically because it, they, they would wanna understand what the ex. The expansion was, how much larger it's being proposed to be. They have to provide, uh, they're providing a plan that shows. The footprint and also the design of the house.
Okay, so it's.
Oh, building, I'm sorry.
It's not a blackjack. Okay. Well, I think, I think we should vote to recommend. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I tend to agree. I think it'll fit out there and. Pretty much anything would be better than what's, what's exist- existing there right at this current moment.
And, and if you look at the, um, I think you can still go to Google, Google Maps and look at street view. It really wasn't like, like, um, you know, the.
Yeah.
It really wasn't much of um an example of. Historic housing that you felt was necessary to preserve.
Not, not on this area, really.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um now I always forget, do we actually technically have to vote on this or do we? Is it just like a?
The board usually votes whether to recommend or not.
Okay. Well, I have, I have a, a motion, I guess. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, Kedham?
I.
Kid?
I.
Stetsons and I as well. Okay. We've got one more of these and this is at uh ninety-five Highland Street. Stephanie?
So this, and this will have to come to the board as well because it will be a mixed-use project. And do you want me to show my screen? I, I could have done that for the other one too. I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, no, that would be helpful. Yeah, definitely.
Turning over my computer to everybody for, let's see, I think this is right here. Okay, can you see? I'm gonna zoom, going to zoom in. Oops, I've gone a little too far.
So this is that, just to orient everyone, this is that convenience store that's out kind of by Roberts Drive.
Yeah.
Correct. And you may recall, because I think this. I don't know if it made its way to the Planning Board a couple of years ago.
Yes, yes.
This was, uh, this definitely, it, it went to the Board of Appeals and, as I understand it, they denied it originally. Um, there was a proposal to make this quite a large gas depot. With several diesel, uh primarily, it was primarily focused on diesel refueling. Um, it was denied by the Board of the Appeals and they've come back with this version, which is quite a bit different. It proposes a mixed use where you would have a convenience store here. And then a top floor for offices and a much smaller um. Gasoline refueling island. And I don't think they're even offering any diesel. Because that was one of, that was one of the concerns I had was if it was primarily um. A diesel fueling depot that you would have a lot of large. Trucks and vehicles coming down this road and pulling in and out in this area.
Alright, and on this one, if, if this is approved, do we get to see? Anything else during?
It come, it, it has, it requires your approval as well because it's mixed use.
So we would get like site plan approval or?
Yep, um and special permit for the site, for the mixed use.
Oh, okay, so this is another double special permit situation?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I remember, I, I mean, this certainly looks a lot more appealing than. Amaz, do you remember they had that kind of strange-looking New Hampshire-like?
Yeah.
Logish.
It was, it was pretty large, uh, gas station, if you will.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to make you dizzy here, but I, I'm looking to see if they included elevations. But I don't see any. But you, you would receive elevations and we've seen them and it, it's not, um.
There is, there is, they are on the corner, but it's the beginning of a neighborhood in Highland Street there, so.
Yeah.
But it hasn't been there. But it hasn't been there uh, like that, like a, like a business for a long time since I, I'm in town and thirty-five years ago, there was a restaurant there. So I think it aligns also with the development of the areas we were talking. This is close to the area. Uh, what we are missing again is the sidewalks, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to agree with you and I think it just, it's a, it's a huge improvement over what we saw originally. So I mean, I I tend to think it's a, think it's a good idea for the area.
Yeah. Yeah. Motion to recommend, I'll get them.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Ketum?
I.
Kid?
I.
Stetsons and I as well. Okay. All right, and next up is, I believe, the meeting minutes from the March twelfth meeting.
Perfect.
Yeah, I thought they looked good as well. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve meetings from March twel- meeting minutes from March twelfth.
Get him second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Ketum?
I.
Kid?
I.
Stetsons and I as well. Um, so that just brings us to Chair Report and Planning Director Updates. Um, the, I mean, the only real thing that I I certainly have to comment on is that, you know, we're, we're still trying to make the push for, uh, you know, really the the making everybody or as many people as we possibly can aware of all the hard work and effort that and thought we put into the um, proposed zoning changes. Uh, I know that Stephanie has done uh, a lot of work, um. You know, setting up some, some different events. And I think the, you know, one thing I'd like to at least get some feedback on is, um, what are, what are the other events, Stephanie? And uh, do we have any participation from board members?
So the other two that I know of and that we have, um, I've secured permission to be at is the Arts and Media Show, which is being sponsored by the Shovel Town Cultural District on Saturday, April sixth, four to seven P M. So that's only three hours. And that's at fifty Oliver Street ECAT. I don't know if any of you have been to the art exhibits there in the past. Um, they, they do a great job. Um. So we've secured time. Then I am out of the state that weekend, um, so I cannot be there. And I heard from Joanne that she is planning on attending this anyway, so she can do at least part of the time. And I'd need someone, I would suggest someone else. And um, I need to know who to drop materials off to for that one. And before we go, and then the NRT Farm Festival is on Saturday, May fourth, from ten to two. That's four hours. And we submitted an application for that and I know was it Mickey who contacted, I think, and you did Kathy, contacted Jo- um.
Jen.
Jen Cummings.
Yep.
And um, so I think.
I can, I can work that one.
Okay, and um, Joanne said she would be there for that one as as well and could put in time, so. And I am available that weekend and and Wayne also offered, so um, you know, maybe we can tag team.
Okay. And I'll check on.
Let me know what your, Kathy, if you could just let me know what your preferred times are. And I'll coordinate with Joanne and the schedules here.
Yeah, I, Stephanie, as I told you, I'm leaving. I will be out of town for April.
Okay.
And uh, especially, I I at the end of April is Passover, so I am with family as well, so.
Yep.
It's busy time for me, April, so Zoom meetings, I most probably will be able to participate, but anything in person is uh.
Okay. And um, so those are the ones we know of and if, you know, I'm reaching out to see if there are any others. Bob and I both failed to men- mention what a wonderful time we had at the Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday. We actually handed out, gosh, a lot of cards. We have, we had little business cards made up. This is what the town administrator had done to help um, get the word out about the public safety buildings and drive people to their websites. So we created similar cards for this project and we, we handed out a lot. Bob's daughter even helped out.
Yes, she did. She did. My little six-year-old enjoyed handing out the cards with uh, the Q R codes on them and uh, and people really responded uh, very well um, to the presentation and and they were very willing listeners and uh, you know, hopefully we we uh, got some support out of it. Um, Stephanie, I will also look at April sixth for the ECAT event. Um, I I can't commit to that just now, so I'll follow up with you separately. If I'm in town, I think I'll be able to um, work that one as well.
Okay, great.
Okay, um.
And then we're, um, I was just talking with Wayne today and I let's see if I wrote it down, but we, we are thinking of doing two other open houses. Um, again, I think the open houses are a little bit of a hit and miss, whether you'll, will attract a lot of people to them. But at least we'll be able to say that we were there for people in certain locations. We'll do a lot of publication on that. And I think it was April seventeenth and May fifteenth were the days. And we'll get, we'll get everybody more detail on that.
Perfect. Okay, well, that was very helpful. Um, anything else, Stephanie?
Uh, no, just two things. We are canceling the meeting for April first. We had nothing from tonight that continued. And the only other project that came up is the Lincoln Street subdivision, which they've still continued. Um, on there and, and then Bob and I were talking, I, it's kind of funny. I was a real supporter of doing Zoom meetings forever until we did some in-person meetings and really kind of went, oh, yeah, I remember being able to see people in person. So we were talking about that. And what I have in my notes, Bob was maybe doing a hybrid meeting once a month. And then doing a Zoom meeting the other meeting of the month.
What it, what do you guys, and I know April's tough for you, Amos, so you know, perhaps we wouldn't want to start it next month, but what generally speaking, what do you guys think of that idea of, you know, one, one hybrid meeting and uh, the rest, the rest solely by Zoom?
That works for me. I'm, cause I'm like this, what you see right now is what I do all day. Um, so I I certainly don't mind getting up from my desk at my house and going somewhere for for a a meeting.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with one hybrid, or more. I, I I don't mind doing all of them in person.
And it wouldn't require you guys to to be there in person, but just gives the option for people and you know, at least we would have some representation there um, in person. So, but we could still, you know, obviously you could still zoom in if 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 you had to, so.
Right.
And Bob, I wasn't thinking about this when we were talking. Our ability to do that is really constrained by whether the select board, whether we're on off weeks with the select board. Um. So we'll check the calendar against the select boards and what we'll do is I'll, I'll put together a tentative. These are the hybrid meetings and these are the Zoom meetings through the end of the year. And run it by everyone and then we can do a confirm- confirmation.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
All right. Any other uh, parting thoughts from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion seconded, Kid.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Ketum?
I.
Kid?
I.
And Stetson is an eye as well. Thank you all and thank you, Easton. Thank you, ECAT. Everyone have a good night.
Everyone have a good night.